Let us pray. Lord, we want to thank you for this opportunity to serve you and our city. We ask you to bless this meeting, given us the insight and courage to work together. That our wonderful city may be blessed and continue to grow and prosper. In your name, Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call. Councilman Degaris?
Here.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Here.
Councilman Tinsley?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
Six presents. Thank you. Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the permanent agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the permanent agenda. Okay. Moving forward to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may do so now. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
My second.
Motion is second to accept this consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Workshop items. Item A, Penny McGath, Downtown Papa Bluff Inc., executive director, will appear before the council seeking permission to sell alcohol at the Summer Bash on Main Street at the 2015 Iron Horse Festival and to discuss upcoming events for downtown.
Good evening. Thank you.
Hello.
About a month and a half ago, River Radio approached me about doing an event together in downtown in the spring, and what we are proposing is a kickoff-to-summer street festival on Saturday, May the 16th, and we would like to have Main Street closed off like we do for the Iron Horse Festival, and we want to have a stage at each end of Main Street with different types of music that day. We want to have kids' activities. It'd be a very family-friendly event, have maybe a car show and some different events going on down there. Is there anything that you want to add? This is Carrie Smothers with River Radio.
Hi. Hello. No, I would just add that this would be an event for all of our stations, so that would be Clear 94, C-95, The Bone, and Today's Talk, KWC. So we would have, like, of course, rock bands, but we'd also have country bands, blues bands, and probably some bluegrass. So a real good mix that would appeal to a wide audience. And again, you know, real family-friendly. We just want to make it a fun, you know, summer activity.
And we do want to have alcohol, but we've also secured security for that day just to make sure that we don't have any issues.
So this is a new event?
This is a new event.
It's a new event.
Yes.
And we have the security company that we have secured, we have used them for over 10 years at our different events, and so we're well acquainted with them. We have a good working relationship with them, and they're always, you know, Johnny on the spot if we ever have any, you know, we've just never had any trouble with them. So they're very good.
Okay. So you all just need a verbal approval on this item?
Correct.
This has taken over the Bones event that used to run outside the river?
Well...
That was my understanding.
Yes. I mean, we haven't made a formal announcement, but there will be no Bone Stock this year. I mean, that is... We haven't made a formal announcement, but there won't be a Bone Stock this year. So we were looking to do another activity but include our other two stations and make it a more broad event.
That might be pretty successful. I'm sure there's a lot of different people who would enjoy other genres of music and...
Exactly. And that's what we wanted to do. And we also love the idea of partnering with downtown and doing something there and making it a fresh start.
I think that's nice.
Okay, so do we need to do, like, a vote, or I mean, just do a consensus?
We have a consensus. Does anyone oppose selling alcohol downtown for these events? I don't see anyone shaking their head no, so it appears that you have your approval.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
The other item that I have requests for alcohol is the Bank of Missouri approached me about doing something in downtown, a business-after-hours event. It'd be strictly by invitation only, and we want to do it on the top of the parking garage so that it's in a more, not secure area, but boundary. So we have boundaries.
Yes.
And it'll be like a business-after-hours reception where people will be invited to come down. We would like to have alcohol, and since that's on city property, we would like to get permission to do that as well.
Can we do that?
And that will be Thursday, April the 30th.
Who's going to hold the liquor license?
Probably Lukey.
Okay.
And I know the process to help them get all that paperwork, because we do that for the Iron Horse Festival.
When will that start up?
For the Iron Horse?
No, your business-after-hours thing. This is another new thing.
Yes. That will be, it'll probably start about 5:30 on April the 30th. This is our first time we want to try this outside.
Good job. Okay. Does anyone oppose what she's asking for?
As long as she has liquor license.
Right. We'll go, we'll make sure.
I think downtown operation has to handle the liquor license. Whatever business is in charge has to handle the liquor license. They get what they call a picnic license for that day.
But we make sure that that's in place before the event is held. We have to do it for the Iron Horse, so I know what we have to do to make sure it happens.
So it sounds to me that everybody's, maybe everyone's okay with it so long as you go through that correct process.
Okay. And then I wanted to update you on some other things. Downtown Papa Bluff has agreed to be the host for the Fourth of July parade and the fireworks, so I'll be coming back to get permission for that as it gets closer to the Fourth of July. And I was also approached about continuing the pageant during the Fourth of July, and something new that we're doing, River Radio is also going to do it with us on the Fourth of July, is a few hours before the fireworks start, people gather around early for parades and fireworks. It's set up something at the farmer's market with food vendors and maybe some craft vendors, and then River Radio's going to come in, either do DJ or sound system, something to have some music. So we'll have something to keep people occupied for a few hours before the fireworks start that night. So we're looking into doing that as well and utilizing the farmer's market pavilion for other things other than just the farmer's market. And then, of course, the Iron Horse Festival, which is coming up on October the 3rd. So those are just some of the things that we're working on.
Yeah, and I think that's some really, really good progress.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Item B, the city council will review an amendment to the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 505, entitled Dangerous Buildings.
My name is Chester Pumphrey, and I hang out at 1119 Spring Street. This paper resumes to clarify, to explain, a proposed amendment to an ordinance. While number one does, in fact, differently define a pole, wall, or a building that leans a little and may someday fall, it is a misstatement of the facts, because run on down to number three, the current ordinance purported to be in need of amendment has no mention of holes. Therefore, this new thing is an addition, not a simplification. I once had a rental property, the ceiling of which had been ruined by water. Due to the raining and wrathing of a chronic complaining paranoid schizophrenic next door, someone put his quirky little red sign on my door. Being nearly finished with the repair work, I applied for gas in order to assure that the furnace was in good order, but the gas company wouldn't turn on the gas as long as the sign was on the door. The building inspector would not remove the sign for the simple reason that where my new ceiling joined with the old ceiling left a gash about three feet long and a one and a half inches in diameter that I had not yet filled in. Mind you, the ordinance at that time made no mention of holes in ceilings. That inspector, to me, was just throwing his weight around. It took a call to Johnny Branham and considerable conversation to get that sign down that day so I could continue my work and negotiate with a prospective tenant. Now, as to three there, even if you could be convinced that this new section, 505.010.3, is in any of the city's business so as to seriously consider this thing, it should be asked of Mr. Smith whether or not it would pass muster at the bar because it lacks specificity. E.g., does that hole larger than 100 square inches, does that mean a single hole of 10 or greater inches by 10 or greater inches, or the aggregate of a number of smaller holes? That's a question of law. The latter of which I've... I'm sorry, let me back that up.
Mr. Pumphrey?
That's vagueness of the law, and the latter of which I believe to be exclusively the business of the people who live there. Then, as to number four, which has not made clear to the citizens of this town, number four talks about cracks in the foundation. This says we're simplifying the law. No.
Mr. Pumphrey, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Say again.
Is this the same sheet that you're reading off of that you gave to all the council?
I have a hearing problem.
Can someone speak to him?
Hold on a minute. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm on my 10 minutes now. Would you let me finish, and then I'll entertain your questions?
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, we have, everybody's read it, so if you want, just, you're having issues speaking?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of what's on here that these people out here are not aware of.
Okay. Please continue.
I'm, I'm bad enough at losing my train of thought, and I really do it quite badly when I get interrupted. Number four is an addition which someone wants to slip in at us and call our simplification. We live in tornado alley and an earthquake zone. Half the buildings, half the houses in town, built between 50 to 100 years ago, will be, will likely be riddled with cracks and separations. Just how many civil service jobs are we trying to justify here anyway? I once had a building somewhat needful of rehabilitation. I was summoned before the Building Standards Board, whereupon a member of the trash police voted out that I'll have to write you up if I catch you there working on it without a permit. For your benefit and for his benefit, if he's watching, let me read from Section 500.030-B in Sullivan's Publications, last amended 19 August 96, to which, "Before beginning the erection, construction, or alteration of any building or structure, one shall obtain a building permit," et cetera, et cetera. Not a word there about doing some repairs, whether on one's own abode or rental property, as my teenage daughters will want to say so there. Again and again, I have been cajoled, badgered, and intimidated about a permit for this, a permit for that, a licensed tradesman for this and for that, none of which was supported by the current ordinance at that time. Some people believe those tactics primarily serve to protect the job security of unionized guys who have no compunctions about sharing their money with those in position to apply such pressures out of public view, commonly referred to as under the table. I had a tenant who had poor credit at the gas company, so she removed my water heater and illegally hooked up an electric. During her stay, she did certain damages and had utilities turned off for non-payment. Upon her departure, I bought a new gas-water heater, but the building inspector ordered me to get a licensed plumber to hook it up, and then he'd have the water turned on. He didn't have the authority to do that. I asked the Building Standards Board, by what law was I prohibited from hooking up my own water heater? Not a member of that group even attempted to answer my question. I know I'm about to go off on a tangent here, but bear with me. I will, as they say in court, make it relevant shortly, and it is in your bailiwick. I would not have had that tenant in the first place, except for the fact that certain entities will not be forthcoming about low-down people. Danny Whitley has been on two occasions quoted in the DAR saying that, quote, "Landlords could help his department control crime if they do a better job screening their tenants," unquote. Well, the gas company operates by a mistaken notion that to make a credit statement would violate someone's privacy. Municipal utilities takes a similar stance. Landlords have asked the police for arrest records, even offering to pay a reasonable fee, and to do that only with a signed release from the subject. The department has refused to even consider it. You can change that, and it would tremendously help the aggrieved and disadvantaged landlords if you would. I have previously alluded that there are many people in this town and in Butler County on one-tenth of Mr. Bigshot's income trying to survive in substandard housing, because that's all they can afford. Many of their landlords would make that housing closer to standard if building inspectors and other officials with the collusion of protected tradesmen were not so nitpicking in their interpretation of the rules, wherever from which, wherever from those rules derive. A major source of dispute amongst landlords and building inspectors is disregard of the grandfather clause. Landlords could and should, I'm sorry, could and no doubt would, make some things better if some folks would stay off their backs with some mistaken notion of what is reasonably required. The ordinance speaks to requiring houses to be vacated. I have to ask, to where would you have those poor folks to go? Sleep under a bridge, maybe? Jimmy Carter, one of the most respected persons of my lifetime, heads up an organization that builds homes working for humanity. I think they could, and perhaps would, if asked, rehabilitate some of those houses that some of you are so fixtated upon destroying so people can live comfortably and affordably while their landlords, many of whom are elderly themselves, may continue on with little income as a reward for a lifetime of striving and saving. Bugs Bunny said, "We use, repair, rehabilitate, and as last resort, we cycle." Nowhere in there is an admonition to demolish, to demolish, to destroy. Let's lose that military mindset to destroy, destroy, and destroy. I have observed that your wrecking crews don't even bother to separate the iron and the copper. It all goes to the landfill where it is never, ever available to future generations. Several of you show to be Christian. I happen to believe that if Jesus or his father could be interviewed today, he would say that all that waste of resources of the good earth and the product of some man's or woman's hands is a sin. At less dollar cost than demolition, the city could negotiate a loan at some reduced rate to an impoverished landlord to enable him to repair or reasonably rehabilitate to keep one more family from sleeping under a bridge. I have a three-bedroom house that some fellow who doesn't know the names of his mother's phone dripper broke into and stole all the wine to get some marijuana money. I have been asked $4,500 by an electrician to do the repair job. If the town would help me with that, I'd pay it back within two years, and some family could have, could have a home to enjoy. I'd have a little income, and the city would be no worse for the wearer with no sin on anybody's part. That scenario or other similar could happen if some folks in the establishment would just lose their authoritarian, bullying, and autocratic nature and begin to relate to the citizenry with some dignity. I yield for a colloquy.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to address a couple of points in regards to the item in question. So, in this town, in this city, we have far too many substandard housing options for individuals.
Sir, I have a hearing problem. I can't hear you.
And so what we're looking to do in this, you know, in this ordinance, in this change, this amendment, is we want to ensure that if we have housing available, doesn't matter what the price of the property is, it is safe for the occupant and their dependents to be safe in. It's really what this ordinance, it's all it does. It creates a standard, it creates an inspection process, it creates remedies where we can notify the property owner of what the issues are for them to make well enough time to make any needed repairs and changes. And so what we have, in my opinion, is we have a resident, Mr. Pumphrey, who does own a lot of substandard properties, who we've had a lot of trouble with, and I understand where he's coming from, but however, it's his, it's his, you know, you know, it's his properties that he has to upkeep, and we have to keep them to a standard where we can have people safely living in these buildings, and they're just not there. We had to demolish one of his properties already, and at a substantial cost to the city. And so what we're looking to do is to set the standard as to, hey, look, if we're going to have properties, residential properties in our, you know, in our city, which obviously we do, commercial, industrial, doesn't matter what it is, we have to have safe buildings. And we're not looking for people to build Taj Mahals here, so we have a duty as a city to make sure that whatever structure people are in is safe. Now, we talked about the folks that are living under a bridge potentially. We have, in addition, the people who can't afford any housing that is adequate here in town, we have great centers for families to go if they cannot afford any other options. So we've got nonprofits that are willing to step in, et cetera. I guess I can go on all day, which I don't want to belabor the point much further, but here is a very important piece of public policy that I strongly support that will protect the individuals that, you know, that can't protect themselves, the people that rent property that can't own their own. They need basic standards, basic housing standards, and that's what this ordinance will guarantee. And I'll yield to Mr. Avery if there's anything that he'd like to point out in the ordinance that I have not covered.
Excuse me, Mr. Pumphrey. Thank you, City Manager, members of the council. Since we addressed this at the last meeting, and I did go through the fact that we had taken through a fairly lengthy process of review by the Building Standards Board and a committee created by the Building Standards Board to see that we got proper measures in this proposed ordinance and change, I feel that we have a good document here. I wasn't under the impression that it would ever satisfy everyone, but I think it is the right document to put on the books for the protection of the general public. As Mr. Kaplan said, we're dealing sometimes with rental properties, and we're sometimes dealing with people that own and live in their own homes, and we want them to be safe as well. I see things all the time where we've got properties that we do have to take actions like described in this. That's not our first option, that's not our section option, that's our last option. If they will do something, we don't go here. We tore down four houses this year already, one of them being Mr. Pumphrey's, and all of, they've all gone through the process to determine that, yes, they were, in fact, dangerous. I've got a gentleman right here that sits on that board, and he's very familiar with that process. Mr. Degaris previously sat on it. We don't want to take houses, but if, in fact, people will not maintain them and not secure them, we have a responsibility as a community to step up and do the things that we called out in this ordinance.
One thing I'd like to add, Mr. Avery and Madam Mayor and council, one of the first things that was brought to my attention by the police department, I was literally maybe a week or two on the job, they brought me down to a site, I was there, I don't know if Mr. Avery was there, but I believe his inspectors were there, we had the public health department there, police. They brought me to a residence, a residence where a landlord rented a facility where the resident did not have any electric, no electricity, no running water, obviously with no running water isn't any sewer. So we went into the property, which is absolutely filthy, you know, just to give you, not to get too detailed, but when you went to the bathroom, obviously with no running water, you had a rather large stack of toilet paper that was sitting there that could not be flushed anywhere, so it was placed on the floor, that was made into a pretty enormous pile. And there was someone living in this house. And that just gets to the extreme of how bad it does get. Now, I'm not saying everyone, obviously, treats their own rental properties this way. We don't. The vast majority don't. I have a good relationship, I hope, at least I think, I do with the Landlords Association. I think most of those landlords really take good care of their properties. We've got a very small few that reach this category where it's that bad, and we just need something to govern that process and for us to be able to escalate the process in case needed repairs are not made to those properties. I'm sorry, Mr. Avery.
No, that's fine. That's a very, very good point on that. As I said, this is not our first option, second, it's our, it's our last option, to correct an issue and a problem that exists.
Can you briefly describe what, what makes a property get to the point where it would be demolished? Just what kind of things would a property, what conditions would they be?
Non-mangements and deterioration of the structure, if it's unsecured, if people are allowed to come and go, you know, if the, if the property owner is not maintaining the property, securing the property, and monitoring the property. It doesn't have to be in any certain neighborhood in town. If you're not paying attention, if you own property and you're not paying attention to it, somebody else probably is, and they're misusing it. So a lot of times, that's where our issues come. Sometimes we get referrals from the police department where we have those types of issues. Maybe it's where there's been a fire, you know, I've got one on the east side over by the Boys and Girls Club. I believe you got a letter on it in January. We're putting that before action for the Building Standards Board tomorrow night, I believe.
So like debris, ceilings falling in, just general things that could cause...
It's a, it's a problem that has developed over a number of years, usually when we're getting, when we're getting it to this stage and invoking these measures.
What are you talking about, unsafe, unsanitary conditions?
Well, there's two concerns. One is, I know the landlord association in this community and throughout the state are trying to improve state laws to give them greater ability to handle properties that are being used by tenants, because when that person's renting that property, they have right of way of it. And for example, in a situation that I know you're familiar with, we had a person that was heating a house with a gas stove when he wasn't supposed to, and it was a multi-unit structure, and landlord's incapable of getting him out on the dime.
Correct.
So in that kind of situation, so these are things that, you know, that's the hustle of the landlord, and many are aware of this, but until we pass state laws to help that, but one of the questions... But one of the questions I have is I know we have the 90-day from the time notified, is other communities, do they use a 90-day window for repairs to be done?
No, we actually sought counsel from the Saint Charles County ordinances, and that's where, and actually, they have a shorter timeframe than what we've tried to establish in this one. Theirs gets down to hours and single numbered days, not weeks and, you know, months, which is what we're trying to institute here. We want to be responsive and we want to be able to cooperate with the property owners.
Well, the biggest, yes, I understand that. And I think the biggest concern that I have is I think we have a need, address what you said and what you said, Mr. Avery, we also have a need to tweak this as we go. There will be situations coming about where we don't have the elements coming through a roof, you know?
Correct.
And where a 90-day window because of the person's means, because not all landlords have money running out of their pockets, you know, where it may not meet that. And then I'd also like to see something tweaked later that, you know, if they're given a decent amount of time to repair it and they come to an understanding where they can't do it or can't get it done, then they have to try to liquidate it to someone who will, or then it's gonna have to be. You know, so these are things I would like to see tweaked as we go. I just don't want a hammer coming down on people.
And some of that's taken care of through the process of a property owner, whether it be a landlord or a homeowner, contacting us, and if they obtain a remodeling permit, that initial permit is good for 90 days.
Okay.
And if they are making progress, that permit is extended without additional charge. Now, if it takes them two years, we're probably gonna sell them another permit.
I gotcha, yes, sir.
But no, even initially, before any of this ever comes into play, they're offered the opportunities to move forward with some activity on their property that would bring it into compliance.
Okay.
What I'd like to offer is for myself and Mr. Avery to get on the agenda, the next available agenda for the Landlord Association meeting, I know, I think Mr. Rowland is the chairman, if we can talk with him and see if we can get on that agenda to, one, introduce what we're trying to do here, one, get that feedback from them, and yes, we're, to answer your question, yes, we're definitely open to tweaking it. We put in here what we feel was fair based on, we use Saint Charles County like, or the city, I think it was county. Was it county or city?
Saint Charles County.
Saint Charles County.
Yes.
We tweaked it what we thought was fair, but again, we're not perfect either. So, again, it's, we're definitely open for any feedback we can get from the Landlord Association. I think everyone's trying to see what we're trying to accomplish here is we're just wanting to make sure that people aren't living in unsafe and unsanitary conditions anymore.
Yeah. Okay.
As David could probably tell, you know, I've served on that board and still go to a lot of the meetings, these, most of these houses, before they get to the Building Standards Board, have been neglected for
For years.
Years and years, and get into bad shape. And they still, the board still bends over backwards trying to get them fixed and encouraging them to make a habitable structure out of it that's safe for the citizens. And that's what, you know, in the four or five years that we've been working on this, trying to improve it, is to speed that process up some and have good, safe housing for people to stay in.
I agree.
And, you know, most of the landlords, like you were talking about, they do a great job, they get on it, the building inspectors and everybody works with them, the city works with them, just like, you know, if we have to end up having to tear a house down and using, you know, city equipment, we put a lien against that property, you know, to be paid by taxes at a time to make it easier on those people, we hate to see somebody lose their house, you know, even if it's not livable, it's theirs and it's a large expense that they've been out most of their life. And we don't take that lightly on that board.
No, we do have a very good Building Standards Board and dedicated membership on that.
Yeah, we worked pretty hard on this, we just didn't do it overnight. I mean, it was quite a lengthy study, and the biggest thing I think we've done is, before, like he had said, people come in and we didn't have any standard recommendations, we did, but we didn't follow through with them. Well, you give him 30 days, you give me 10 days, you give me this. Now, it's going to be where everybody gets the same and we do the same from now on. I think that's the biggest thing we're gonna accomplish out of this.
Consistency, and I think the citizens deserve that consistency.
See, and that's interesting, because in one of Mr. Pumphrey's points, he brings up that people are nitpicking or interpreting the rules as they go. So, if you're saying that this is actually gonna make it more consistent, then in fact it might prevent some of the stuff that he's talking about or that he believes is going Okay, the other thing he mentioned was the grandfather clause. Can you address, are we abandoning a grandfather clause?
When you're talking about health and life safety standards, I'm not willing to consider what's called a grandfather clause.
Right.
If it's unsafe, if it's dangerous to life or health or safety, I mean, once a determination's been made through the Building Standards Board, we have criteria that we utilize to do that, so.
Does this apply to businesses where there are junkyards visible to the
Grandfathering, what they call the grandfather clause. Basically, it's a non-conforming structure or situation that was in existence before the law was created. Now, the meeting we're having tomorrow night, we won't be using these standards here and we won't be acting upon these standards here, even if it's passed tonight in the voting session, we still won't, because all of those were started under the prior policy.
Right.
And it will be completed under that policy. Only going into the future, would we invoke this once it's on the books and approved? So, but no, when you come to life and health and safety, I don't think that we have any requirement to allow to continue to exist something that does not meet the standards. I think we have a legal, if not a moral responsibility, if we determine something is dangerous, to protect the citizenry.
Right.
That we need to act on it.
You know, I think that that job, being an inspector, is actually kind of hard because, you know, you can't please everyone. There are people that are gonna feel like they're being bullied and picked on because you're trying to get things in a place where they're healthy and safe for people. So, I feel bad for Mr. Pumphrey when he comes up here and tells us these things, because I know he's struggling, but I just wanted, the other thing I wanted to address too is we can't, we can't give him, can't do any kind of loans to citizens to repair, that's just not something the city could do, you know?
No, you couldn't utilize other taxpayers' money to
I mean, everyone else would be wanting something like that, we can't do that.
The other thing is, when you come to the landlord association or any other group, I would bring, like they do in healthcare, case studies, when you bring, example, A, B, and C, this is what we've had to do, if you got pictures and stuff, because that way, you're gonna make people understand more clearly what you're exactly wanting to do.
And we do document all the actions
Sure, you do.
of the Building Standards Board, and I believe you've attended a meeting or two of them. So, we are very thorough in the way we act on it, because it is a serious issue, you are dealing with people's possessions, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any motions to move this to the voting session tonight?
Motion to move to the voting session.
Second.
Motion of second to move item B to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will discuss the transfer of property located at 1935 Barron Road from Barbara S. Smith to the city of Papa Bluff. Is there someone here to discuss this? Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This was a discussion point, it was brought up, I believe the last meeting in January, possibly, was when it started, and we discussed the fact that there was a property that was in bad condition, the owners know it's in bad condition, they don't have the wherewithal to make the improvements, and they said they would turn it over to the city. Before, I wanted to make that leap of faith, saying, oh, yeah, the city will take that, I wanted the city manager and the city council to be aware of it and make a judgment. There is, there are positives, if we do accept the property, we can improve some drainage that's a serious issue up in that area. It's Covington Meadows and Barron Road is the approximate location where we're talking about. A structure would have to be demolished. I have had an inquiry from a property owner or a person in that area that would be interested in the property after the improvements were made, but I would want to see that we did it and still were able to maintain the improved drainage that would need to be dealt with. There's a drainage pipe that goes underneath this house, you know, it amazes me that that can happen, but it did happen. At this point, I haven't moved to get an agreement, signed agreement with the Smiths, but we have been in conversations with them. So, before, we would want to move this onto a voting session, I would want to take that measure. We did, however, do some title search, got an informational commitment from a title company to assure us that there were not complications with the property if we did accept it. So, I would be open to answering any questions that you might have.
So, are you wanting us to hold off on this then, rather than put it to the voting session March 2nd?
I think so. I want to get the, and of course, I would have to get with Mr. Smith, we would want to create a document that these owners would sign and release that property to the city.
The only two issues I see here from the, it looks like we have to make sure that it's adjournedly held with Mabel Manning and Barbara Smith, I think Barbara Smith is
Miss Manning is dead. But we need to get documentation of that.
Documentation of that, and then, only other thing, I talked to her son and if she's still able, ability to transfer property.
Right.
But it may take a little bit longer if she's not.
And that would be Barbara S. Smith is who you're speaking of, and her son is David, I believe. I haven't spoken with Mrs. Smith, but I have spoken with Mr. Smith, her son.
But it's something we can do, I think it's a good idea, it just may take a little bit more time than March 2nd to achieve.
I believe so too. And there are, this is another one, it's in a neighborhood where people have noticed it and wanted action on it for some time, but it was a difficult situation. David, you're aware of the location, we went to it that one day.
That's between Barron Road and Susan Circle, isn't it?
Sunrise Circle.
Sunrise Circle, yes.
I wondered about that house for some time, but you say there is a person that wants the property.
He expressed interest in it, I don't, I didn't call him back because I knew that I couldn't say, yes, we'll do this, because we didn't, we weren't even moving toward possession of it at that point. So, I'm gonna call him back after this meeting tomorrow. I'll call him
Drainage down the middle, he couldn't put the house on?
The drainage is to one side, but it, yeah, we want to make sure that that's our primary interest, is to improve the drainage, I believe, you know?
That drainage was probably put in by State Highway Department years and years ago.
When Barron Road was the old highway, I'm almost certain that it was. So, that goes back at least to the 50s, maybe the 40s.
Yep, somewhere near there.
Houses behind repaired?
Yes. The front room floors and the basement.
We could move this on to the workshop session again on March 2nd, if anyone's, if everyone's okay with that.
Seventeenth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second's pretty quick.
March 7th, what is it, March 17th? March 17th?
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion of second to move item C, yes, item C to the workshop session on March 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm sure that Mr. Smith and myself will pursue this.
Yes.
To that end.
Okay. Motion carry.
I have it, part 16.
Yes, yeah, that's right, 16.
Sixteen.
Do I need to make an adjustment?
Sixteen.
Okay. Item D, the city council will discuss a resolution appointing a city hall feasibility study committee and making citizen appointments to the committee. Is there someone here to discuss this?
Well, yeah, Madam Mayor, myself and Mr. Traxel's in the audience as well, is when we put together our first ideas and how we wanted to kick off the effort to start the planning process for analyzing the city hall, analyzing the police station, municipal court, and making decision really what's best to move forward, either it's renovation, partial renovation, new construction, et cetera, we wanted to put together a pretty extensive committee that would help guide us in our decisions. And so, half of that was for the council to come up with appointments for this committee, and the other half was for myself to come up with appointments that I felt were appropriate. And so, really, that's where we're at, is we want to get this committee together to start, to kick off for the activities which we'd like to do, and this, I'm here and myself and Mr. Traxel are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
You can come up and address if you want.
I don't really need to, if anybody has any questions.
I do think it's a good cross-section of the community, the committee that's been proposed, and I'd put it in favor of the people that are on there.
Okay.
How soon do you plan to start?
Well, we kinda already have, if you can look at that.
Wow.
That's the floor plan of the first floor of this building. And so, we may have jumped the gun a little bit, but we wanted to get a good start in here so we can really start doing some evaluation.
That's this building?
That's this building right there.
Yeah, trash cans drawn in there to catch water.
There may be a door that's not quite right in there.
You did get a little experience with the ice and snow.
Oh, yes, we did have a little experience with the ice on Saturday, too. But with the committee, we'd like to get started within the next several weeks, anyway, and take them through the building as it is so they can really see what we're looking at, the conditions that we're in.
This committee would be the eight nominated from the council and the six from the city manager, that'd be the total committee. I agree, it looks like a good group of people to do it.
Yes.
You've got several city residents and other people that have businesses in town that have been in construction and building trades and
I agree, I think the committee, or you all did a good job of coming up with the committee.
I'd make a motion, we move it to the voting session.
Second.
Motion of second to move item D to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, or I'm sorry, item E, the city council will review an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff to enter into a contract with Dillian Traxel Architects to conduct a city hall feasibility study.
Madam Mayor, myself and legal counsel, also coordinated with Mr. Traxel and his legal counsel to come up with the agreement, which we have in your packets for tonight. So, if there's any questions you have about any specifics in the agreement, we'd be happy to answer it at this time.
I'd make a motion, we move it to the voting session.
Second.
Motion of second to move item E to the voting session, which will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, the city council will discuss a memorandum of understanding between the city of Papa Bluff and Mid-Continental Nail regarding Chapter 100 tax abatement.
Madam Mayor, I can talk about this as well, is myself and Mr. Halter talked about this project for quite extensive period of time. And when we worked through the investment being made by the employer in the form of the expansion of facility, which is almost $5 million, and with the extra employment that's being added to our community, which is over 90 jobs, you know, to walk you through kind of the criteria and the rationale behind my recommendation for tonight, you know, I'm pretty experienced in handling abatement requests in Michigan, you see them quite often, and so, when you look at it, you're looking at that total amount of the investment. Here in this case, like I said, new construction, is it expansion, or you can call renovation, you're looking at, again, right around, to be exact, it's around $5 million, but it's $4,917,000, I'm sorry, $4,917,000, $250,000 is what they're investing. And so, it's, again, pretty extensive with the employment we're getting. So, we looked at the investment that's being made in the form of dollars, and we looked at, obviously, job creation, which we're getting that as well. So, we added that points in when you looked at this investment. Then you looked at, believe it or not, corporate citizenship. Everyone asks, what is that? Well, are they a good member of the community? Are they involved and actively participate in community events and donating to nonprofits? The answer is yes on this one as well. The company longevity, how long have they been here in business? Well, again, this isn't a startup, this is a company that's been here and established for quite some period of time, another check. You know, we talk about their impact to our local economy. This is a major employer. They're not our largest, but they are a major employer, especially with the expansion, they're working their way up to scale. They're, they're working their way up to scale. What is their positive impact going to be in consumption of public utilities? Well, we all know with more consumption, more building expansion, more employees, more consumption. That's a good thing for utilities as well. Literally, when I go down the list and you talk about the investment they're making, it's literally every checkmark they get. It's a, it's a good investment. It's a smart investment. And so they could have asked for a lot more than what they did, and I think that shows you, again, back to that corporate citizenship, they do a very good job. They're only asking for what they believe is fair, and I believe the abatement request for the personal property in the, in the amount of 10 years is a very fair request in lieu of the major investment this Mid Continent Nails is making. So I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding my rationale for my recommendation, and leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we move this to the voting session.
Second?
Second.
Motion of second to move item F to the voting session. It will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. No, mine says tonight.
Is it on tonight?
No, it's not on.
I thought it was.
Let's make sure real quick. Okay. It'll be on March 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will review a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink at a proposed restaurant in a CX-3 central area mixed-use commercial zone district. The applicant is Diane Denton Bueller, and the property is located at 201 South Main Street, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, this is at 201 South Main Street, which is directly across the street from US Bank in the 200 block. She is asking for a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink in the building that she owns there. It is a CX-3 central area commercially zoned property, as everything in the downtown pretty well is now. And if approved, this would allow for sale of alcohol by the drink to bring a larger variety of food and drink to the downtown, which is Mrs. Bueller's contention. Existing land use is a thrift store. Surrounding land use to the north, southeast, and west is all CX-3 central area commercial mixed use. Comprehensive plan does call for adaptive reuse in this area of Papa Bluff and mixed-use commercial and residential, which would come from the CX-3 mixed use. The site is mostly covered by a building and it slopes to the west. Police and fire protection are available with fire station number one being the first This property is located in the heart of the downtown commercial district. The applicant proposes to use this building as a restaurant with liquor by the drink and continuing the existing thrift store use. It has to have a conditional use to have liquor by the drink, even with a restaurant in this area now. Limited parking is available on street, and the nearest public parking would be the downtown parking garage. Initially, when this came before planning and zoning, there was a lack of information either provided or transferred to the commission, and it was held back by one meeting. So we've had two workshop meetings and one voting at the planning level. And I did recommend denial at the time that it was originally proposed. More information came out, but I did not change my recommendation. And the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed it at length, and I believe it was near unanimous, if not unanimous, for denial. Now, if in fact it is approved, the conditional use would be recommended to only, this is a stipulation that we're talking about here, Councilman Rush. If, if it is approved, the conditional use would go only with the business owner. And if the business were to sell, a new owner would have to reapply for a conditional use permit. As I stated, the planning department recommended denial, the planning commission recommended denial. We did have negative comments from surrounding property owners, and you may even have someone here in the audience tonight, I don't know if anyone else is going to speak. We had a negative report from the police department. When we do our staff report, we get department reports, and the police department spoke against it as well. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Okay, so my understanding is if the council follows the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the council could basically make a motion to follow the recommendations, and at that point, it would die, this, this whole thing would die. So you could choose to do that, or you could...
Or maybe just not do anything, and it would die for lack of motion.
Yeah.
That, yes.
So just so the council understands what we have on our hands here, you could follow the recommendations or not.
So it would all make a motion, it would all die for lack of motion.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
No, our packet is full of pictures and...
Yes, I knew quite a bit of information was provided.
Reports and many things.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on the issue?
Yes. I am Diana Denton Bueller, okay? And I do believe that the problems with the police department have nothing to do with 201 South Main. They had to do with 205 South Main, which is an apartment building. Grandfather did, and I've, I've had it for about 15 years, and it was grandfather did long before that. It's ran separately, okay? I did read in the paper the next day after my last meeting up here that there was, it was mentioned that I had had a business priorly closed by the police department or by the city of Papa Bluff. I have never had a business closed. The only thing I can think of that they would be speaking of is I ran a club at 205 South Broadway, which had a fire. And after the fire, it was too badly damaged that the landlord, I was just renting that building, the landlord did not rebuild it. Now, 203 and 205 was actually running as the same building before the fire, but 203 did not burn, and 205 did burn. 203 had been, 203 had been being used just as the meeting room. And the city did let us go ahead and move the license from 205 over to 203 so that we keep the business going and not occupy 205 South Broadway anymore. And that's the only time I can think of that anything was done about me closing one of my businesses.
That might be something you have to take off with the newspaper. I don't know that, but anything else about?
Okay, at, at the last meeting I was up here, I see, I got the opinion that it might, my denial may have something to do with the fact that in my gifted thrift store part, that I have an adult shop. And I am willing to close the adult shop if granted the liquor license. And I have, I have abided by all the, all the requirements of the city of Papa Bluff to put a liquor license in there.
Mr. Kaplan had a pretty good idea just now. He said if you would bring, you might want to bring your concessions up to the Planning and Zoning Commission so that they can review what, what you've said you're willing to give in to in order to proceed with that.
Who could I talk to about doing this? Because I'm not quite for sure, just...
Mr. Avery is right there.
Okay, okay.
We'll have you coordinate with Mr. Avery, because if you do, or if you're willing to have some concessions regarding your properties, I'm not, you know, speaking on the half of the planning commission at all, or Mr. Avery, but we're willing to listen to what your thoughts are. Mr. Avery will be your point of contact, you're right there, and then he'll, he'll get the information together, he'll provide a recommendation of planning and zoning, and then they'll ultimately decide if it's warrant in additional consideration or not.
I believe that for the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to pick it back up, I believe that we would ask that the council direct the Planning and Zoning to readdress it so that she doesn't have to begin the process anew. Does that sound fair to reading?
Yes.
I'm sure we can do that. Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion that would direct Ms. Bueller to take her concessions back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as suggested by Mr. Avery?
I'll make a motion that we ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to work with her and revisit the issue of changes or concessions she's willing to make to see if they will reconsider their position.
I'll second.
Motion of a second to allow her to go back to the planning and zoning for, to review the concessions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Item H, the city council will discuss the creation of a volunteer position of chaplain for the Papa Bluff Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On this particular item, the, I was approached by the, sorry, I'm not thinking very well today, the, the chief of the fire department and the individual who's currently already basically is the informal chaplain for the fire department, and asked that we disformalize the position that really is already there on an informal basis. And so they, this individual already had the job description already pretty much written up, sent it over to me for my review, I sent it to, obviously, to Mr. Stucker, fire chief, to get his comments. He tweaked it just pretty minor, and the efforts you see here are what you see there as well. And also, I had a legal counsel review the position, because obviously, any creation of new positions has to be done by city council, and so we just wanted to make sure we went through all the steps. And so legal review has been completed as well, and we're, we're good to go unless there's any questions or concerns.
Like Mr. Kirk, you know, has got the trust of all the firemen, and the fire department has the trust of him, and he talks with them, not only on fire-related, but other things, and that's very important in their line of work, the things they see, as we recently, you know, they had to go through some things. And he was Johnny on the spot to help take care of it and the work to get through it. I think it'd be a...
And he's right there. The rescue mission is there, he works there.
And they serve food to him on holidays, and he brings food down to the police department, and it's just a great fit for the fire department chaplain.
He's done this for years on a volunteer basis. And I know the previous administration, there was something, I know he came to me a year ago or something, and there was something, they kind of gave their blessing to it. But I believe this, we do need to make this official.
Okay, so if anyone wants to make a motion to send this to the voting session for March 2nd?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion of second to move item...
H.
Item H to the voting session on March 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item I, the city council will discuss a purchasing policy for the city of Papa Bluff.
Madam Mayor, myself with the directors went through a process of talking and sharing, obviously, ideas with one another, and how we can better improve the efficiency of the operation for city hall and, obviously, all city operations to how we purchase items, goods, services. And so this is the collective document that shares all those ideas and thoughts. And so, right now, we have a lot of redundancies already in our process. For example, when the city approves a budget, you're making an appropriation at the time you're approving a budget. And so by setting our, our current ordinance is setting such a low threshold for bringing either anything for competitive bid or possibly back to the council, you, you're really creating a lot of red tape in the process. And again, we're not looking to, to curtail any regulation or, or any, or any approval by this board. We're just looking to set a very specific criteria of what we do for what. So we, as you can see in this document, we split up everything into three magic, major categories. So obviously, the first category is items that are $1,500 or less. And you'd be surprised on how much that is. That's the bulk and majority of all of your expenditures are these low dollar items. These items is, obviously, we don't, we're not going to require a purchase order. We encourage the use of the P cards, which will be rolled out in the near future, and that way, we can get everything through without, you know, Teresa getting bogged down with very, a lot of checks for a very small amount, which you, again, you'd be surprised in how many of those we have on a, on a weekly basis. So by using P cards, one, it's more efficient, two, it saves from accounts payable to issue a huge multiple, multitude of checks, and then, obviously, then we'll just pay the bill as it comes in from the P card, and that's one check versus sending out hundreds. So there's the $1,500, anything that's $1,500, you know, one through that $3,000 level, that's your informal quote or bid process. So meaning, go onto the internet, call local business, get faxed information as what that good or service will cost. Again, as long as it's within budget, and they picked the lowest qualified bid, they can, they can, they can do that. And it's at the complete discretion of that department head. Anything that's 3,000 on up to $24,999 is you got a formal quote process, to where we're formally soliciting for people to give us a quote or a price for a good or service or item. Again, these are items that if they are already approved in the budget, then again, requires no further approval, other just award it to the lowest qualified bidder, and then we move on. Now, items that are $25,000 and above is a formal request for proposals, request for information, request for qualifications, et cetera, and then would have to come back here for final approval for the council. Now, again, that step isn't necessary, but I think it is when you're talking about, because you're talking, okay, why do we approve the budget for? Well, you approve the budget, but it is a living, breathing document. It does change. And when you talk about these high-ticket items, I think they do need to be reviewed at the time that we're trying to make the, the appropriations. So, and obviously, we're also making some other changes in the, in the policy to accommodate the P card use, the purchase card use. We're also, as you can see, there's a policy regarding emergency expenditures and how we go through that process. We have sole source use policy in here to what, what determines us going to a sole proprietor or sole use when there is no competition. It just goes through a lot of different things that we currently don't have in our purchasing policies. So just to, again, to summarize, again, this is the collective thoughts and efforts of all the department heads, including myself. It's been reviewed by legal counsel, and I am happy to answer any questions or concerns you have at this time.
Well, 3,000 to the 25,000, will that be a sealed bid process? Are we talking about formal?
No, it won't be a sealed bid process, no. It'll just be, you provide the bid or quote, and then, obviously, we just take the lowest qualified bid for that service, good or item.
Okay, so what's the difference between an informal bid and an informal bid?
Formal, you're gonna, formal, you're gonna advertise it. Informal is just you don't have to advertise it, you just go out directly to the vendors. There isn't an advertisement in the paper or, or solicitation on a website, it's just going directly to the source, hey, you know, just calling or emailing, hey, look, can you give me a price for XYZ?
I can see the, moving it up on the, to the 1,500, just the inflation and some of the things that are in the budget. But going up to one portion, you know, I read in there, something about a major purchase at the 25,000 or greater, I think, you know, just a conservative vest, and more than 75% of our citizens would say the 5,000 is a major purchase, and we're spending their tax dollars, and...
I agree.
I think the 1,500 to 5,000 would, should, I mean, it should remain like the 1,500 to 5,000, rising to the lower with the formal quotes like you're talking about and go with the bid from 5,000 on up for, as considering a major purchase. It's a little more paperwork, but you know, it's just citizens' dollars that we're spending. And it may take a little longer, but I think it's our job to okay some of those. You know, and most of them, when they come through, everybody's done their work and it's just a matter of procedure. And most of them get through. And the other part I had looked at was the local changing to 25 mile radius. I can see that to some extent, but when I see, say, local, I'm thinking of within the city limits. Those businesses and stuff that have those goods and services, you know, they're paying property taxes. They're under city utilities and paying utility taxes that are benefiting us. And the people in the 25 mile radius, you know, they may have the same thing, but they're not contributing to the, you know, they'll still spend most of their money here in town. But the local people, you know, contribute by way of taxes and stuff and I think we should have two deals, that was local and then semi-local before it goes.
I would disagree with that statement because when you have a business, maybe that's just barely outside the city limits. They are employing people who may live in the city, who pay property taxes in the city for money they make at that business. I think that the 25 mile radius is pretty good. Businesses all around Papa Bluff, whether they're in the city or not, contribute greatly to our local economy. So I think they should, I think that was
Well, I think, I think city and county should definitely, along with what you're saying. But one to probably run into is on some of the larger ticket items. We have local businesses that will, you know, will contract that, you know, those goods or those services out of the city. And what that means is, you know, and I don't know how, it's kind of like separating the wheat from the chaff. You have some people that will separate that out and that, that business will actually touch 10% of that money and 90% of that money will go far out, away from Papa Bluff, further county. So we, I agree, we try to stay within city and county as much as possible. Because if you're in county, you've got people, they'll be residing here, you know, and I like to stay, I like to stay within that versus the 25 mile. But again, we have to have the wherewithal that when people are contracting these goods or services out of the, away from us by large distances, you know, and they're only touching a small amount of money, well, then it really defeats our purpose. So we just have to have a little bit of understanding of that under the, under the scene to know how it's being done.
Well, like I was saying, I just may have not made myself clear, I know of those people at 25 mile radius, they're probably going to spend, you know, biggest portion of their money right here in town and will benefit from that. But the local businesses, like I said, are paying property taxes and utility taxes that are benefiting in addition to what the people outside that, of the city limits would be paying. So that's an extra benefit that we're getting from those local, what I consider local, you know, within the city limits. And like I say, you know, we could talk about our citizens and we talk about the community and the community, you know, is everybody outside that comes in here and shops and worships and visits us, you know, that's part of our community and we provide service to them when they're here.
You wouldn't want to discourage businesses in the county though by not offering them the same thing because they, I would, I agree with what Mayor Protem Russian had to say about just sticking within the county rather than the 25 mile radius, but you don't want to alienate those businesses in the county by saying you don't get the same when we have so many out, just barely outside our city limits that contribute.
You know, and it's hard to say, it's kind of like how the, it's like the High Patrol, how they do wrecker service. You know, they, they used to ask, and if there's no, if there's no preference given to the wrecker, they rotate them. You know, I mean, it would be nice if we could figure a way to do something like that. I don't know how you'd actually structure that in ordinance, but you know, that's what you want to do, is you want to have equitable fairness. And yet, I agree that, that businesses in the city limits should be given a greater scrutiny to have the opportunity to do that trade or that exchange of goods. I agree with that.
I question that the 25 miles, is it a bit far?
Well, I think if you're, I think if you're city first, county second, I think you're doing good. But it's just like when they did the catalytic converters, you know, some of these things we do, no one's going to be able to do in the city or the county. You know, some things we want to do are going to have to be done away from us. But you know, some things aren't.
So are we wanting to make some changes to this policy before it goes before the voting session on March 2nd?
I'd like to see it stay in the county, because I'll tell you the reason why. The street department, one thing, has got to be equipment and they can only buy their equipment outside the county because there's no place in town to buy certain parts for their tractors and things, different trucks.
Well, if, you know, if it's not available within the city limits, then, you know, that's what I say, you know, then the, you know, the 25 mile radius or the county, like Mr. Mayor Protem Russian was saying, would be the next, next option. But then, of course, if somebody outside of that says they can give it to us for less than that, then we're going to save money and go, you know, outside of that unless we put a percentage on it like we did for construction type things. And I think that would be a little, on small purchases, would be probably detrimental to time, wouldn't it, Mr. Kaplan? If it's just like the lower price, say within the county rather than in the city. I mean, we'd save money by just going that far, spending a few dollars in gas to go get the purchases for like, say, the trucks or something out in the county rather than in the city. Six one half does another.
Well, I think it would be good to have an emphasis, you know, and again, how you model that, I don't know. I think it's good to have an emphasis for city and then county. And then you go beyond that for services that can't be performed in the city and the county. But, you know, because I can definitely tell you that there'll be definitely times that comes up where things are going to have to be done either out of Cape or Farmington or St. Louis or Memphis or whatever, Jonesboro, where we won't have the ability to do it locally. But I think the intent should be that, but you know, as common sense is going to dictate. Because like I said before, if you have a firm, if you have a firm that says it's local, but what they're doing, they're going to put out 90% of that revenue outside, that's, that's a misnomer. That's not, that's not being frank with the situation. You know, I mean, we want to be, because that, if you're, if you're doing it, put 10% in the, and 10% is 10%. But if the, if the game by going with somebody from another state or another bigger city actually squashes that 10%, then the common sense says you go with what's going to give you the best benefit.
Well, my rationale behind the local area or trade area or local, whether, how we define a local area. You know, I thought about this quite in length is, again, when you, when you think about people or investors that do build businesses in the city limits, which is great. Yes, they pay property taxes, yes, they add to the economy, employment, you know, et cetera. But the city also has the ability to offer incentives to those, those, those businesses. So we can, we can add just a number of economic development tools. And that's how they benefit, meaning in the city, obviously, they also benefit from cheaper utility rates. And so, once you go outside of the city, they don't get those incentives anymore, but they still do add a positive impact to our economy. And so, that's how I was thinking through it, is I don't want you guys to think that I'm somehow just saying, hey, look, it's not important to, or we shouldn't reward businesses that are in the city. We already do that. We have incentive programs that, that do that where I cannot offer that outside of the city limits, nor would I. And so, we have that today. I just want to kind of expand our horizons because we know our trade area is, you know how Eight Points got their name, is the Eight County area. That is our trade area. I'm not making that local. I'm saying everything within the 25 mile radius, what seems to be kind of the standard that I have seen is being used as the local area, is use a point in the city, draw a circumference around that and that's where, that's where I got the 25 mile, because I don't think it's that far. And it's, I think it's fair that those people do add a benefit to our local economy and we're no way giving them any added benefit that what a local business would get because we, we don't give them abatements, we don't, you know, we don't give them any other incentives because we can't, we can't give them lower utility rates. But what we can do to help them is, hey, look, they do add a benefit to our economy. We can at least add you into our definition as well, we define a, a local vendor. That was my thoughts.
I understand what you're saying.
Me too.
You know, like the residency requirement, you know, they go from, you say, the water tower 60 and 67 intersection, you know, and that's, that creates a pretty good area and the 25 would, I don't know if that'd even get out of Butler County in a lot of extents or even include all of Butler County. You know, according to where, you know, the way the county jots out here and there, if that even included that.
No, actually, I think it would, 25 mile, if I know right, it'll actually come close to the border of Arkansas. You know, so it'll, it'll capture some of that area as well. But again, to be fair.
It's still, still in Butler County and part of Ripley County, according, if you did it from the same point, like say, 60 and 67, it may not get all of Butler County and Mr. Russian said, you know, and like we all, I think, have agreed, you know, anybody that lives within that radius does, probably 99% of their shopping here in town and contributes to our economy, like you were saying.
Sure.
Well, I, I know where, I understand where you're, hearing what you're saying. I think, I think it's good for, for nomenclature to include all those, all those areas within that 25 mile radius. And I think we would have the intent, you know, to try to do local, in my opinion, city and county first. That would be our intent. But like I said, there's going to be times that, that things are going to have to be done outside that 25 mile radius, outside the city, outside the county. It doesn't help if we have aspects of, of people, you know, barking every time the council goes outside those areas because of the expertise level, the training level, you know, getting a CCIE, accredited Cisco Systems engineer to set up a platform. No one around here can do that. So I think that, you know, we have to use common sense, that we're going to try to always go, I don't want to always try to go city, county, but when you can't, you can't. So I understand what you're saying about trying to encompass more communities into our trade area. I understand that.
And I guess, Madam Mayor and Council, my only comment on the, on the 5,000 versus these different spending levels I've given you is, I guess it's, it's really a preference of the council, that's obviously why I brought it here. It's really, you have to, you have to determine what level of micromanagement we want to push down to the operation. And for me, I guess, as you can see, I'm a little more liberal on that, is I want to put the hands in, I want to put the authority in the hands of the department heads. Is, you know, given these different guidelines and here's the process, I, I feel that, given that we've got an approved budget, I feel comfortable with this. Now, if it's something that's non-budgeted, that has to come back here. They can't pull a fast one like that. If it's non-budgeted, it's got to come here for a budget amendment. If it's budgeted, you're already approved it and so I guess I don't see the, this is my two cents. I just, I don't see the rationale to micromanage it down to the scrutiny of a $5,000 item or service or item. It just, that really adds a very lengthy process. I'll do it. I'm a good soldier. I have no problem with it. But I just thought I'd show you, hey, look, here's an idea of really setting up a more broader purchasing policy that I think that will really, I think, benefit not just general government activities, but enterprise activities alike.
Well, I don't have enough historical background, you know, to say, you know, how, how I feel about department heads spending that money in that manner. And that would have to come from councilmen that have been on, on board longer. You know, I know that I get, I've been concerned about certain ticketed items that the city spent money on over the last five years. And a lot of that creates water under the bridge. But we just want to do our best to be prudent with the money as much as possible. You know, if you're going to do it that way and then we see where there's spending that shouldn't be done, then we can revisit the issue and go back to being more micromanaged though.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, one way or the other.
I, I agree with that 150%. Is this, is just, you know, again, if, if, and again, if this is put in place, there's nothing that says this can't be amended, changed, retracted, any of that. It's just showing you, again, this was collective efforts of not, I don't want you guys thinking this was just Heath, Kate and I's policy. This was collective efforts of all the department heads. We all looked at it, we all added our two cents to it, we all went through it. It took several weeks to go through it.
Well, yeah, and I, and I witnessed, and we'll mention the department or name, but I witnessed the purchase and I asked you, I said, how much was this item or items were purchased? Because I thought it would break the threshold of five. Because I purchased something like that and it broke the threshold of five. So, you know, so I agree that we need to be prudent. So in other words, if we do that, if, if we got people that aren't doing the job right, then we got to bring it down to micromanagement.
I thought that was good clarification to bring up that you're, you're already approving it in the budget, but if something is a non-budgeted item, that it would come through the council. I think that, that is a pretty good clarification, so I feel a little more comfortable with that.
But of course, it's a working document. I'm open to let us continue this dialogue, come up with something that we all can live with and put in place. So there is no hurry.
Well, I, I think it would help too, if any, if anybody on council sees something where an expenditure is made, that they just have question about it, you know, could talk to you or bring it up in, in discussion.
Oh, I'd encourage that anytime.
Well, you know, and looking at that, you know, up to the 5,000, you know, with the formal quotes, you know, like we got in here on the one part, I guess that would be, you know, something in writing, you know, from them that, and then, you know, purchases, I think, right now, I think says like anything over 500, city manager's approval. You know, that, yeah, but still, that would be not thus micromanaging as much as, you know, that's raising that up to, from 1,500 to 5,000 and, you know, you approve it if it's in the budget. And then anything over 5,000 for it to come back to us. I think that's a large purchase for any of the, most of the citizens in town and we need to watch theirs.
And I don't disagree with that at all and really, I, I'm just telling you, hey, look, as a, as an employee, I don't, I don't mind having the authority by myself, but I think I, I feel good in trusting our department heads with this authority. So that's why I'm like, let's give these, this authority and guidance to the department heads, one. Two, not that I'm somehow diminishing, $5,000 is not a lot of money. It is. However, you got a $60 million plus, million a year operation here. And so, $5,000, I'm sorry, when it's compared to our overall budget, is a very small number. And so it's, that's why I consider, that's why I just ask you to consider these thresholds. You know, obviously, if the consensus is not, just keep as is?
Well, can we, can we get bullets sent to us of expenditures just so we can know what's going on?
Absolutely.
That would be, that would help. Because if you had, if you came across your desk and, you know, and say some department spent four grand on something and we could actually look and see if it was budgeted, we can look and see and make sure. But see, I think sometimes we don't, we don't really get that in front of us.
I would say I wouldn't have any problem them doing that, you know, with city manager's approval. I mean, that's what we hired him for, to manage our, you know, money in our city. And up to that, you know, certain money amount, I know we've got to draw a line somewhere and Mr. Kaplan and the department heads thinks it's necessary and that's the best price after getting some formal quotes. I think that's great. You know, if that's him doing his job and the department heads doing their job and getting the quotes and getting the best price that we can for the citizens.
But it wouldn't take any, it wouldn't take that much energy for them to put bullets to us just to look at because, because we would have oversight, which is what we're supposed to do anyway.
Yeah, well, if somebody asks us, we'll have to answer for them.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, we can create a log for each of these activities and really, we'll, we'll get used to submitting that log on a bi-month, a bi-weekly basis to the council and we'll show you, hey, look, for these thresholds, this is what we did. For this threshold, this is what we did. And it'll, in that way, one thing I like about it is it provides full transparency, not only to the council, but to the public. And actually, what I'd like to do is not take it one step further, is we can even post that on our new website. It shows people why we're, why we're doing this and how we're doing it. So that way, it helps guide people that are interested in becoming, obviously, vendors to the city, how we make our decisions.
I want us to do that.
Yeah, I like that. Did anyone want to go ahead and make a motion to move item I to the voting session on March 2nd?
I'll second.
Motion second to move item I to the voting session on March 2nd. All in favor?
Is that without any amendments or other work on it or?
Well, what we'll do though, and is, the way I look at it is, that's why we're going to have these bullets coming out. If we feel that this isn't working, then we will, at a meeting, we'll bring it right up and we'll tweak it.
March 2nd is just what, five more days?
And we can do it, we can do it on the 16th. Yeah.
Look at some of it and think about it and see if we need to make some other changes or something. or something.
I agree.
The sixteenth or so would be, give us a little more time to look at it.
You want to move it to the sixteenth?
Yeah.
And then, what I'd, all I'd ask is, um, if, if you guys have comments or tweaks, just come on to my office, or we'll, we'll see what you think.
Send you an email, and we'll come to you and talk to you.
Right, either, whatever method you want to use.
That'll be great.
Facts.
Make the motion then to amend Peters?
Yes, to...
Tinsley's motion to the sixteenth?
Yes.
I question if we shouldn't build those thresholds into, that you're talking about the, for the report.
Oh, we would.
We will.
That's exactly what I do, I use that as my template, and that's how we build the report.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I'd like to add to that, that we review this within six months to make sure it's working correctly.
Okay, yeah, after we...
Whatever the final thing we come up with.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion of second. Who's our second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, the city council will review an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2543, or its members who are employees at the Papa Bluff Fire Department. This item is not, my understanding is that there's a few more things that need to be done to this, so, um, I just ask that if someone could make a motion to table it until...
Well, if, if it's not complete and ready, um, I'll make a motion that we table the item till it's, uh, completed.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion of second to table item J, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, the city council will review a change order to the bid received from Information Systems Intelligence LLC relative to technology improvements for the city of Papa Bluff.
Madam Mayor, on this item, because we had a, a couple of small tweaks to, um, our, our IT project, um, and given that there's been a high level of scrutiny from local media and concern regarding this project, I figured I'd bring Mr. Pry up to explain what we're doing here and why we're doing it.
Hello?
Madam Mayor? There's three items that came up during the project that was unforeseen. Um, I think you have them in your packets. Um, do you mind which order we go in? Okay. Um, you should find a, a quote, by the way, network administrator for the city of Papa Bluff, just in case anybody knew. CDN Q7365. It is, um, there's several line items, but it's actually just basically one thing. It's, it's a ruggedized cordless telephone for the water plant. We discovered that, as most people know, it's a twenty-four hour facility, many times there's only one person on staff, they have to go, uh, check the river intake for the water, um, every so often, um, other places around the grounds, and they have to answer the emergency number, the eighty-six fifty, for power outages, any kinds of problems, they have to be able to answer it. Right now, they're trying to do it over a consumer-grade cordless telephone, it doesn't reach, there's so much concrete and steel in the building, it kills the signal, half the time it doesn't work right. Um, they just basically dash out and dash back and hope they don't miss a call. This phone is very, very close to one we're already using at the electric warehouse. The electric warehouse staff that moves transformers, goes all over the property, uh, reports it works very, very well, has taken bumps and drops and hasn't broken, very clear to listen to and making place calls. These items that you see in the list on that one, um, line item three is, is just an adapter that makes this phone work with our new phone system. It's just an interface. Um, and then, further down, Cisco products, uh, they, almost everything with a Cisco product requires a license, and that's all that item seven is. And then, ten is basically support and insurance in case something should happen to it. They will replace it, repair it, that sort of thing. Any questions about this?
What's the life expectancy of a phone like this?
Um, I think electric has been using that one for four or five years, I believe. Um, and basically, it has very little worse for wear, other than possibly replacing a battery.
Okay.
Wow.
It's gotten, you know, it's not abuse, but things fall when you're working, and it's just, it's, it's designed to take a few bumps and scuffs and even splashes of water, and it's just designed for that, that type of environment. It also has a, a very strong transmitter that will penetrate where a standard phone just won't do it. These, this one should reach out to the river intake whenever they go to check for water, um, and all other places on the grounds without missing any emergency calls that might come in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, okay. Quote ending in seven, three, seven, one. It's a single line item. We, uh, when, when telephones respect out for the new phone system, um, something that was just overlooked was the fact that we didn't order any adapters to make them wall mountable, rather than desk mounted. They come with the stand that sits on the desk, sits on a, a table, but they're just not out of the box designed to hang on the wall. So these are just, um, adapters that go on our existing phones that, in the places like motor pool and, um, I think there's another one, the street department, various other places around the city, um, they can't really very easily sit it down on a desk without it getting knocked off. They need it mounted to the wall, and that's what these adapters are for, is just simply to mount them to the wall.
Okay.
And then, last one, seven, three, six, six, uh, is a single line item with quantity These two items are for the water plant and also the maintenance departments. This is just basically a loud ringer for, for a IP telephone system. In the water plant, frequently, there's pumps running and there's all kinds of noise, hammering, everything, you can imagine, they can't hear the telephone if they don't have some device that rings really loud. Maintenance is the same way with, um, air tools and various things that are going on in the shop areas. They just need to be able to know the phone's ringing, so they can go answer it. And that's all that that is.
I understand all those, uh, on your second one, I don't have that number you gave. I found that thing on, uh, six, eight, it's got fifteen items listed on it.
It's the printout that I laid in front of you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was revised today. He just got the last revision today, I think.
It was, yeah, it's that number right there, yeah. So we don't need that three thousand dollar change order, we found a, a way to save more money to where we pare it down to the prices in that, ones in that memo.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions, Madam Mayor, or, or, or council?
I think it's pretty straightforward, I'm glad you found a way to save a little bit of money.
Just anytime we have change orders, we just want to make sure we're being fully transparent as to why we're doing it.
And, you know, as, as the project proceeds, um, you know, if, if there's anything that we know about now, we would bring it now, but occasionally, something will come up and, you know, I might be back. Hopefully, we've covered all our bases and we're good.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item J to the voting session tonight?
It's actually item K.
Okay. Second.
Okay, motion of second to move item K to the voting session tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, the city council will discuss an ordinance creating a finance committee for the city of Papa Bluff.
Madam Mayor, this is a, a suggestion of my, of my own. You know, one of the things that has been, um, I think trumpeted by some local individuals and by the local media, has been this concern over local spending. And I think it's really gone, really, uh, to the point where I'm trying to communicate with individuals that have concern, um, and I think it's not being productive, and so I wanted to find a more productive way to talk through differences of opinion, and, and so I, I, I thought that, hey, look, every municipality I've been at prior to here has had some form of a finance committee, either it be finance or ways and means, et cetera. And so I felt that, I think the time was to create a advisory board similar to what we have at the municipal utilities advisory board, or any other other advisory boards from the, from the Black River Coliseum, uh, to anything else, that lets empower a, a, a body to look over the city's finances and, and provide this body here with a recommendation as to how to handle certain situations or to provide opinions. And with that, um, I really thought about it at great length of who these individuals would be, and I think we need to create a more balanced, um, committee to where it is a good cross-section of the entire community. And so with that, um, Madam Mayor and Council, I have the names of the individuals that I recommend, and again, this is just a recommendation. I have Jim Bailey, Ken James, Sharon Kissinger, Matt Funky, Marty Michael, Paul Duckett, and the mayor, Angela Pearson. Um, so that would be the seven that I would recommend for the appointment if, obviously, if this committee was created. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Have any of these individuals been contacted about this?
All of them but you.
Yes, I, I discovered.
And all of them has agreed to serve.
Okay.
I'm hoping our mayor will too.
I think that's a well-rounded group of individuals.
Would this be set up like a committee that...
We, what we used as our template was the ordinance that created the municipal utility advisory board. And so, we want to empower this group to really dive in, do a deep dive and a scrub on, on everything that I'm doing, or anything that the city is doing. Um, and I think with the, the expertise of these individuals, I don't think anyone could say that we don't have our credibility with this group. Um, so my goal here is, okay, you know, we talked about how supposedly that, um, I'm spinning the city into an oblivion into bankruptcy, well, why don't we get the opinion of this group and see if I'm really spinning the city into bankruptcy? Um, I don't think I am, obviously, and I shared with you why, but however, since there's people that feel otherwise, let's, let's tap into a resource that I think that will provide, I hope, uh, a, the credibility, so if they believe that, hey, look, I'm on the right path, that the community will accept that and endorse it, and we can finally move forward. The one thing I'm just, um, concerned that I keep hearing over and over is how I'm bankrupting the city. It's almost like, what I see in the community is I, if it's a regurgitation of a line that's in our local media paper, it's all I hear. Um, I don't, once I explain it, then they're like, oh, okay, I, it's, it's, I'm just looking for a more fair, balanced way to share my ideas. I, as you guys remember, I issued a, a challenge to anyone that wanted to debate these issues with me in an open forum mediated by a public administration professor. Well, no one took me up on that. Um, so I figured, well, instead of that, because that could be an adversarial type of format and forum, well, this one, I don't want it to be adversarial. I want it to be a board that we have open professional dialogue, exchange of ideas. Uh, I think this is more productive than to, than this has been going on in our local community through the social media and through the paper. And I just want that to go away, and I want our community to come together, and I think finances has been the number one thing I've been hearing over and over, and since that's a concern, let's appoint a board like this, and let's use them as the litmus test as to how we, where are we? Are we on the right path or not?
Well, in, in my experience, you know, I did a lot of legislative work with my profession, with the senate and, and the state house, uh, years ago, and one of the things I was always fascinated with is, you know, how the senators and house representatives would use people for advisory, because, you know, Dennis Ziegenhorn from Sykeson one time told me, he said, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert on bridges, so when that comes up, I need to be able to talk to somebody that is. What I like about this, and, you know, and some of the things we've seen in our, in the TIF and TDD, and, um, there's some complicated issues, I think it's nice to have a CFO of a lending institution, you know, investment, uh, a person that has dealt with bonds. I think a, a developer in the city, I think it's really going to be good as a tool for us that, to help dialogue and, and hash things out. I think it's a good idea.
I think, you know, not only is this good for now, it's good for the future.
Yes.
It's a good way to, you know, set the stage for better, um, better practices moving forward, so, you know, I was kind of surprised to see my name on the list, but I suppose that would change mayor to mayor.
Yeah, it's the position, so whoever's the mayor will be on this seat.
That's understandable.
But what I'm hoping to show the community is I'm not afraid, I'm not cowering down from the, the cause of this concern. I just, I just, I really struggle to find a productive way to deal with the concerns, even if it's a few, to me, it's still, it's still legitimate. Um, if people feel that I am, that I am bringing this city down the right path, I, I want to listen to that. I want to address it, and this is the best way I can think of to addressing it by creating this, this board, giving them, and empower them, uh, through this ordinance, and, um, and again, their advisory to this, to this council, and I think they will prove that, uh, I think they'll prove themselves to be a strong asset, not only for the council, but for the community.
Well, I, I think that it, it may answer the concern that you have, but I really think the bigger picture is, I think that it will be a great tool for the council.
I agree with Mayor Protem Russian and Mayor Pearson, you know, it's a good mix of people, and it'll be a good tool, and they may enlighten us on some stuff and just give a different point of view on it, the way that we're not seeing it, because we all think different and...
Exactly. You know, I was talking to someone the other day about the council and finances and what we bring to the table, and each council person on here, we're all different, we're all elected for a reason. You know, um, Councilman DeGares used to be a police officer, Councilwoman Abshire is so familiar with the housing authority, Dr. Russians, a chiropractor, and David Johnson does, he's done building work for years, Peter Tinsley and his, um, Red Cross experience, and I, and I've done casework and anything involved with psychology. So, we all have different things that we bring, but if we have somebody advising us in these different areas that maybe we're not all the way familiar with, then I think that could only be an asset to all of us.
And I think we all use that, you know, to some extent, if we, you know, read something and we don't understand it, like, the other day, I called Mr. Kaplan, asking about one thing that was on the agenda, and I've talked with some other people about things without, you know, bringing up what they are, because, you know, some of it, but get different views on it, and that helps me, but somebody that's got the knowledge and experience in that field to understand it more, to make a logical decision.
Mm-hmm.
I believe it would be that many more voices in the community that, I agree with Mr. Kaplan, I would approach for so many people that have concerns, and once you explain it to them, they're, they're finding what, that they...
And yes, since we're not having much luck with, if you remember our efforts to try to do town hall meetings, to try to even contact people on social media, which has helped some, um, uh, you know, again, it just, nothing has worked. I'm hoping that this will work, that, uh, the people in this community will endorse this committee, these members, and I, and this will be a public meeting, is I, I hope they will attend these meetings.
Well, I think this is one more tool in the toolbox. I think that the, I think that the, uh, the, the majority of the, uh, ward meetings were successful, and, you know, we, we give, we give availability for people to come and give input, especially in their wards where they can talk about things that affect them on a daily basis, and we still have to get back to some of those wards and, and finish facilitating some of the things we worked with, we need to do that, but, you know, I want to revisit that issue, I think we should... I think we should do that twice a year, once a year, for sure, because that's very good. Some of it was very enlightening.
Make a motion to move it to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second to move to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item M. The City Council will discuss a resolution authorizing the investigation of financial assistance available under the Missouri Highway Safety Program for traffic enforcement.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager.
Hello.
Good evening.
The Grants Department is applying for a grant on behalf of the Police Department to the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety Division. We are requesting $66,665, about $65,000 in order to employ one patrol officer who will be assigned to the law enforcement traffic division. In order to complete Part One of the application process, I need the City Council to authorize us to participate in the grant competition. The grant will run from October 1, 2015, to September 30, 2016. It will be one full year.
Okay.
And that will cover the wages as well as the benefits.
Okay.
Always up to getting grant money.
Yes. And thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
You probably don't hear that enough, but thank you. Does anyone have any questions for her?
And the only thing I would add to this is, one, I definitely echo your comments, Renisha does a great job for the city, and we're thankful to have her. But with this, any grant, remember, and Ed will tell you this, there are strings attached to them. So this one, even though it does give you grant funding for, I think this one's two years.
This is one...
Only a one-year. Beyond that, we have the cost of the officer after that, so keep that in mind. So that will increase our costs once the end of the grant comes. But just want to make sure you're aware of that.
What does the chief believe that would be beneficial to do that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, right now, of course, you know, Chief Whitley does, but we recently sat down, Chief Whitley and I, and we went over the recent crime statistics of the city. We went over all the different categories of different events and crimes that we've had in the city. Even though we're seeing an escalation in some areas, I don't want people to think, hey, look, we're, they believe that, one article that was in the paper about, you know, we were one of the most dangerous places in the, I think, in Missouri, if I remember right. And so, but there is some crime that is escalating, and we do need the professionals to handle it. We have an excellent police department, but we want to make sure that we are complementing that police department with the ebbs and flows of activity that we see. And we are seeing some increased activity in certain areas, and we need to address it. And this is one tool that'll help us get in that direction.
Could we possibly, if this grant runs out, have this officer next year fill him in with someone that's retiring or something?
Yes, but again, I think we do need to increase our police force, and I think we need to increase our fire department as well. And you're going to see some ideas of how we can do that and not, obviously, bankrupting the city. And I say that without being too much, you know what.
This package pay for its benefits?
Yes.
It will. It'll pay for the position and the benefits.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We are growing in the city, and it does seem like it is, our traffic issues, it seems like they're getting more. I don't know if it's just me, but you can't get across town anymore like you used to be able to, which is a good problem to have, but I could see where we could need some additional...
This is for the voting session tonight?
Yes.
I make a motion, we move to voting session tonight.
Second.
Motion is second to move item M to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're moving on to the action required items. Bill Number 7788, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for four drive-through lanes for a proposed banking facility at 2991 Oak Grove Road.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7788.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of Bill Number 7788. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri granting First Southern Missouri Bancorp, DBA Southern Bank, a conditional use permit in a C-2 general commercial district to construct a four-lane drive-through window for a banking facility at 2991 Oak Grove Road, Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7788. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri granting First Southern Missouri Bancorp, DBA Southern Bank, a conditional use permit in a C-2 general commercial district to construct a four-lane drive-through window for a banking facility at 2991 Oak Grove Road, Poplar Bluff.
Move for adopt.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt Bill Number 7788. Any comments or questions? Roll call. Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Bill Number 7789, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending Chapter 505 of the Code of Ordinance entitled Dangerous Buildings.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7789.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of Bill Number 7789. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri adopting amendments to the City Code of Ordinance, Chapter 505, entitled Dangerous Buildings.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7789. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, adopting amendments to the City Code of Ordinance, Chapter 505, entitled Dangerous Buildings.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of Bill Number 7789. Any comments or questions? Roll call. Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Bill Number 7790, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the construction of a trail from McLean Park along Route W, and then along Shelby Road.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7790.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of Bill Number 7790. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to execute agreements with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in regards to the construction of a trail from McLean Park along Route W, then along Shelby Road for approximately 800 feet.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7790. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute agreements with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in regards to the construction of a trail from McLean Park along Route W, then along Shelby Road for approximately 800 feet.
Move for adoption of Bill 7790.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of 7790. Any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, just have a comment if I may. I just want to make sure, fully disclosed and transparency here for the public, is to, this is the grant we secured, and the amount of $400,000 that will extend our trail and sidewalk system. Now, the one thing I want to make sure for full disclosure is, is there a match from the city cash? Yes, there is. And right now, we're estimating, Renisha, is that around 164,000 is what we have in the budget that will come out of, has in sales tax money, which we have money for, that will, obviously, for 164,000, we're getting, as you can see, a huge bang for the buck for expanding our trail and sidewalk system. So I just wanted to make sure that, one, everyone in the council knew that, and then the public knew that. Thank you.
Thank you, Renisha, again, for your hard work. Roll call. Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Bill Number 7791, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Dilly &amp; Traxel Architects to conduct a city hall feasibility study.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7791. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Dilly &amp; Traxel Architects to conduct the city hall feasibility study for the city.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7791. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Dilly &amp; Traxel Architects to conduct the city hall feasibility study for the city.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of Bill Number 7791. Any comments or questions? Roll call. Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Bill Number 7792, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for ancillary equipment relative to the technology equipment purchased by the city.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7792.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7792. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the purchase from Information Systems Intelligence, Inc., for ancillary equipment relative to the technology equipment purchased by the city.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7792. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the purchase from Information Systems Intelligence, Inc., for ancillary equipment relative to the technology equipment purchased by the city.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of Bill Number 7792. Any comments or questions? Roll call. Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Six yes votes. Bill Number 7794, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a change order to the bid received from Information Systems Intelligence, LLC, relative to technology improvements for the City of Poplar Bluff. Wait a minute. 7793 is tabled, that's the file.
Yeah, you skipped it anyway.
You're on the right one.
You're on the right one, that's 94.
Okay, 7794. Okay.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of Bill Number 7794. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to approving change orders to a bid received from Information Systems Intelligence, LLC, relative to technology improvements for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7794. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to approving change orders to a bid received from Information Systems Intelligence, LLC, relative to technology improvements for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of 7794. Any comments or questions? Roll call. Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Bill Number 7795, the City Council will take action on an ordinance creating a finance committee for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7795.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of Bill Number 7795. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, establishing a finance committee for the city.
Move for second reading of Bill Number 7795.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of Bill Number 7795. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, establishing a finance committee for the city.
Move for adoption, Bill Number 7795.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of Bill Number 7795. Do we have any comments or questions? Roll call. Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGares?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 1813, the City Council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Tree Advisory Board.
Move for first reading of 1813.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of, for the reading of Resolution 1813. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the Tree Advisory Board for the city.
Move for adoption, Resolution Number 1813.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of resolution eighteen, thirteen. Do we have any comments or questions? I wanted to make a comment real quick. Did this include the alternate for this board? Because I was contacted specifically, it does include that. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I think Councilman Johnson wanted to recommend someone different than the tree administrator recommended.
We have an exhibit A that shows Mr. Greg Browning as an alternate.
Okay, there was a different gentleman that had contacted me. Had some pretty good experience.
Would you like, Angel, to come up and at least explain your rationale first, and then kind of go through what Mr. Johnson's suggestions are? Good, ma'am?
Yeah, the gentleman that I had brought up, that I wanted to see on here, is it on here?
I think David wanted to recommend Mike Holfield.
Mr. Holfield was one that was, as I contacted all of the people who had applied, I called and left message specifically with, I assume it was his wife, and I did not ever hear back from Mr. Holfield. And I had recommended Mr. Browning as the alternate. As I said, I talked with all of the folks and everybody, you know, that I did talk with was enthusiastic about participating. I just felt like, you know, in the conversation with Mr. Browning, that he had a good understanding of how trees benefit the whole community.
This gentleman's name is Kenny Barker.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I talked with Mr. Barker as well.
Is there a reason why he wasn't on there?
As I said, I just, you know, I talked with all of them. Mr. Barker was also very knowledgeable. I just felt like Mr. Browning had a broader understanding of what the tree board is about. I welcome, you know, if, as I said, you know, the decision is up to city council, and I welcome Mr. Barker's input as well as anybody else's.
Mr. Holfield and Mr. Browning's name were on the original list. They applied for it correctly first.
Yes.
That's why I was going with one of them. So I think we should stick with that person because they applied first. I mean, with one of those two persons.
Yes.
So that's fine with me.
Any other questions, or...
I want to see Mr. Barker get on there as an alternate because he applied for it, and I just...
How many alternates will that make for... Have on there?
I don't know.
Mr. Browning is going to be the alternate. That's what we're voting on, I think.
You could have a second alternate, I think.
Yeah, you can have as many alternates you want to your ordinance.
If we can have... If we can have... If we can have another, because that gives you a chance to see who's going to actually give you more enthusiasm, more participation. If you can have more than one alternate, then let's just add an alternate.
It's just a bigger pool of people to draw from.
Yeah.
I said, Mr. Barker's...
Can someone make a motion to add Mr. Barker as an alternate?
I'll make a motion to add Mr. Barker as an alternate to the tree advisory board.
So will we have two alternates?
In addition to Mr. Browning.
In addition to, yeah.
All right, the one mayor.
Yeah. And you'll have a good base.
Oh, I think that'll be wonderful.
You will have a good base.
It's good to see so many people interested.
That was what was the hardest part, was there were so many good applicants, and everybody was enthusiastic, and so it was like...
Well, the one thing I like about it is it showed, I think there was the mindset of the locals joke of below citizen, that there, this tree ordinance came about by the efforts of one or two individuals. And even though that's true, those one or two individuals did approach me in regards to the concern for the trees, but what it showed is they weren't alone in that concern, is my point, is there was a broader network of individuals that are in this community that do care about the upkeep and health of our trees. So that's what I thought was very exciting about this process. I think this is going to be, again, another positive step in the right direction for our community.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
No one's going to... No one's going to second Dr. Russian?
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second to add a second alternate, Mr. Barker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. So, no further comments or questions? Okay. Roll call on resolution number eighteen, thirteen.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Okay. Resolution number eighteen, fourteen. The city council will take action on a resolution appointing a city hall feasibility study committee and making appointments to the committee.
Move for the reading of resolution number eighteen, fourteen.
Second.
Motion is second for the reading of resolution eighteen, fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, establishing the city hall feasibility study committee and making appointments to it.
Move for adoption? Second.
Motion is second for adoption of resolution eighteen, fourteen. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Okay. Resolution number eighteen, fifteen. The city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the investigation of financial assistance available under the Missouri Highway Safety Program for traffic enforcement.
Move for reading of resolution number eighteen, fifteen.
Second.
Motion is second for reading of resolution eighteen, fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, stating the city's intent to participate in the Missouri Highway Safety Program and authorizing the city to investigate the financial assistance available under the Missouri Highway Safety Program for traffic enforcement for inflammation... For inflammation by the Popper Bluff police department.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion is second to adopt resolution number eighteen, fifteen. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Okay. The city council, the city of Popper Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law, section six one oh point oh two one point one, RSMO litigation, six one oh point oh two one point two, RSMO real estate, and section six one oh point oh two one point three, RSMO personnel.
Make a recommendation that we adjourn from open and go to close after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion is second to go into closed meeting after the city manager's report and adjourn.
From open, yeah.
From open. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think Mayor Pro Tim Russ and I discussed at the last meeting, we learned that under the sunshine law, that before we go into that, we have to have a roll call for a closed session.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I asked... I talked to Pam about that, and she said that we did that for a little while, but it came to her attention that we do not have to do that. You don't have to take a roll call to go into closed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess we're good then. Go ahead, Mr. Kaplan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's been a long time since we had a meeting due to the weather and all the events leading up to today. And so I wanted to give you guys a, you know, a briefing of all the things that have happened in the city recently. Also, I wanted to take this opportunity to also recognize the street department for the wonderful, I think, response they had to the inclement weather we had here in town. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from the community at large. I'm hoping they see a better response to how we're handling inclement weather, and we are open, obviously, to feedback, in which we did receive, where certain areas weren't as addressed as thoroughly as others. So we took that feedback, and we, again, addressed those areas as they were brought up to us on a case-by-case basis. Also, I want to individually compliment, you know, Mr. Dennis Kirby. He's been the interim superintendent for the department, came in under hard circumstances, and then right on the heels of that gets this inclement weather. And also, I would like to note to Mr. Kirby, when we had this weather, him and his staff came out here on Saturday, along with myself, a lot of the police officers, and Mr. Massingham, as they shoveled off the roof to the police station, and it had about six inches of ice and slush and junk on it. Really, if they probably didn't do that, there was a possibility the building was going to... The roof was going to collapse. We were getting such bad leaking and infiltration from the outside that we just don't think the roof was going to hold that very long. So again, my kudos to Mr. Kirby and to the street staff for a wonderful job. They represented the city well, and I think we have learned as to what the expectation now of our city is, and when we clear and maintain our streets. And so, I'm really pleased. Also, while I'm doing that, I'm also wanting to take my hat off to the electric department. I know I've been pretty hard on Mr. Bach and the maintenance of trees, in which we am... I am obviously looking forward to our new tree advisory board and our tree administrator, even though I don't agree with how some of the trees were trimmed, and we're moving forward, that's behind us now. The one thing I can tell you is I don't believe one single individual lost power during the inclement weather, and that is because of their efforts. And so, I want to compliment Mr. Bach and his leadership and the rank and file of the electric department, because maintenance of trees is important. We're going to move forward with the methodology that we believe will not harm our readiness to serve, but we wanted to just make sure our trees are taken care of. But, again, I don't want to diminish the hard work and efforts of Mr. Bach and his staff, because, again, how many communities can say, when we got the boatload of snow we got, and then the ice that followed, that we didn't lose one single power customer? That is just incredible, and I think that they should be complimented for that. Also, I just wanted to give you guys an up-to-date on where we're at with our fourteen audit and preparation of our CAFER. Our audit is complete as to the orders coming out here. Now, all their field work is done. They just got to compile their findings, if any, and any comments, which they're doing that, but also, Mr. Conway is preparing the CAFER on the city's behalf, the comprehensive annual financial report for fourteen, and we're expecting to have that completed by the end of March, if not a little bit sooner. And then, obviously, once that's complete, we will provide that first draft of that document to this body. But, first of all, it will go to your finance committee that you just approved, so it'll go there first for comment and feedback, and then it'll eventually make its way up here. And then, again, we'll provide full transparency to this council and to the public about how our financial performance for fiscal year fourteen was. So we're getting there. We're almost done. Also, I just wanted to let everyone know, if you have not called city hall recently, you'll notice that we now have an auto attendant that is now answering all calls. While our new telephone system is up and operational, we now, believe it or not, have voicemail. I just can't believe I'm saying that in year twenty fifteen, that we're just now getting voicemail, but we do. I wanted to thank the efforts of Mr. Pry, who's in the audience, also with our folks from ISI, and also RJ, who's helped us with our fiber extension. I forgot RJ's last name.
Roger Jenkins.
Roger Jenkins. But what's his last name?
Jenkins.
Jenkins, so, oh, RJ. Oh, no, I get it. Roger Jenkins. Sorry. I thought RJ was for something. I was a little late or something. Sorry about that. But all the hard efforts he went into to putting up this network, and just to reiterate, the city has never had a unified telephone system. We now have one. The city has never had a unified network. We now have one. And so, I understand the concern, again, that's been brought up about the level of spending. Folks, again, that's why I'm really looking forward to the dialogue of the individuals that are going to be appointed to the finance committee. We'll ask them, you know, hey, look, how do you run your businesses? Do you have voicemail? Do you have a unified telephone system? Do you have servers? I bet you all it's going to be yes, 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 across the board. So hopefully, again, we'll start that dialogue, and I'm looking forward to it, but I just want to let you go, let us know that that first step is complete. Our next step here is now expanding the network to the departments that didn't have access to that network. Fire department, parks, museum, airport, all of them are going to be put onto our network that were never there before. And so, instead of them being individual islands all by themselves, we're all going to be on a unified network, supported by Mr. Pry, and of course, by ISI, and obviously, hopefully, today's computers as well. So we're...